Nobody else is here.
Commissioner Malloy's coming?
Yeah.
Oh, no, the fourth one was only just a couple left.
I just.
But then I went and got another bag and I ate up the whole load.
You aren't kidding.
No.
Those hot pretzels are really good.
They're so good and they're addictive.
They're very good.
That's why.
Good morning.
How you doing, guys?
How you doing today?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your meeting.
Hey, this guy all cleaned up.
Yeah, well, every once in a while I have to. Gary, I think Gary's not on it. He did.
I looked up and I said. It's exactly him. Mm-hmm.
This is our workshop in preparation for our July thirty first meeting. And Madam Departmentate Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Commissioner, before we get started on the agenda tomorrow, Cantal Mesa, uh, Commissioner, uh, we have some members of Action Group here that, uh, who were able to assist with the relief dollars. Um, and that was really early on.
Yeah.
In the COVID nineteen pandemic, that was the first round of federal dollars that were awarded. And one of the things we tried to do was, and we're trying to do everything we're awarded, is level the playing field, uh, make things equitable across the board, whether it be giving to, um, other townships and other cities or to nonprofits like Action. And they have some great news for us here today because, uh, what they initially presented to us is now coming to fruition. Uh, Rosetta Carter is here and I believe you're the Executive Director.
Yes, mhm.
Rosetta, did you want to take it from here?
Okay, I can. I'm a preacher, so you know.
There you go.
I'm gonna work it from here.
Ready to go.
We are so excited. I first want to introduce Jeff, a pastor, Jeff Stanford, who is, uh, our lead organizer. I've got a big mouth.
Well, they get here on TV.
Oh, okay. And he's our lead organizer for Action. Uh, I also want to introduce Karen Jackson. And Karen will coordinate and run the new truck here in Trumbull County. And the good thing about that is the fact she is from Warren. So I have someone that knows the people and know what's going on. Also, I have Karen. I've got two KK's. So this is KO and that's KJ. But she coordinates and does all of the scheduling for the, um, Mahoney Truck. And as you could see, uh, on here, this is about the way, we didn't bring on, this is the way that she does it. It's a big job of scheduling. We have probably about, what, thirty, thirty-four stops a month that we do. And we go, uh, because the commissioners over in Mahoney County gave us funds, we go as far as Ebring, we, and also since we have funds from Mercy Health, we go as far as Columbiana. So that way it'll let you know that your funds for Trumbull will go all over. Now, I gotta read this 'cause I can't remember.
Yes.
Action and Flying High, Jeff Magada, um, here to announce the Mahoney Valley Mobile Grocery Store On Wheel. The Trumbull Truck will be launched at a ribbon cutting Tuesday, September the tenth. Please put it on your calendar, probably about ten o'clock. We'll let you know and it'll be right at a downtown location. We definitely need the commissioners there to hold the scissors or the ribbon because of the funds that you gave us. It is a thirty-three foot, brand-new Starcraft bus, equipped with four freezers, three-step floor, side entrance, larger than the Mahoney Truck. Yeah, it's large. Ours was twenty-eight feet. And we found that we needed more, so it's thirty-three, uh, foot, brand-new. And it took so long because Ford Motor rep sent the wrong chassis, so we had to send it back. Then the union went on strike, so they wouldn't deliver any trucks. So finally, we have it. And when I talked to Lisa, I wanted to know how you want your, your emblem on. In Mahoney County, we have the Mahoney County emblem on the truck, as you might be able to.
I think that would be fine.
Is that fine?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right. It's larger than a Mahoney County truck of, uh, twenty-eight feet with a box truck. But what we did, because we're going to be going all out into the country over here in Trumbull County, we also bought a portable freezer that will attach to the truck. And that way, we don't have to run back and forth carrying other, uh, uh, products and so forth in a box truck. Uh, year-to-date, in the Mahoney County, we served over twenty thousand families and over four hundred and fifty thousand in groceries. The truck is ran by Jeff Magada. Action, what we do, we just get the funds and make sure the vouchers. Last year, we made four dollars and fifty cents. That's it. And if everything that you, we do for the vouchers goes back into the truck. So we do not make any funds on it at all. Yes, sir.
So, so, just so everyone's clear, um, because I guess a lot of people don't have the backstory, but there, when we talk about food deserts, food insecurity in a lot of our areas, uh, this is a way to kind of block that gap.
Yes.
And, um, be self-sustaining in the process.
Yes.
You know, you're getting the money for this truck, but those vouchers are gonna continue.
Exactly.
And the, and the nonprofit will continue to, to generate funds.
Exactly.
And this could serve a lot of the, you know, underserved in our community.
And the thing about it is, but it's for everyone.
Yes, of course.
Yeah, yeah. Yours is, now, when we deal with Mercy Health, uh, Mercy Health, we, we're on theirs with a line item. Now, there is, uh, income restrictions with Mercy, but not with any of the other funds.
Not with Action.
No.
But you will be, you will be focusing on those areas where there is food insecurity and there are food deserts.
That's where Karen will come in. That's what, um, in fact, Karen O. just started with us. Uh, one, I lost my, my one girl. She moved on up, but I was glad she did. But, uh, that's what Karen does. She looks for those underprivileged areas.
Yes.
Uh, nursing homes, uh, um, anything, what, what else are you doing? Senior citizens, the projects, the projects. The schools, uh, we have learned that it is good to go to all of the schools because that teaches the children how to shop on the truck.
That's right.
And so we allow them to do. We've got Springfield Local, some of the other schools. I think your school, Warren, well, my kids were from Reserve, but Warren, what, Harding? Okay. Uh, they, that's an area where we can go. They've already called for us to do this, to look at, uh, going over to the school.
And when we talk about food, we're talking about a lot of whole food. We're not talking about stuff you buy at a,
No.
Quick Mart or anything like that. We're talking about vegetables.
Vegetables.
Healthy alternatives for kids and for seniors.
Fresh broccoli, uh, potatoes, uh, sugar, everything, bread. Now, I did ask for ice cream, 'cause I'm old and I want ice cream.
Everybody needs ice.
You know, we need ice cream. That's comfort. Yeah. Uh, Mercy Health wasn't too happy with me, but they said, okay. So, but all the, everything from shrimp to chicken to bacon to butter and ribs, octaves, all of those, some of those are not a salad, green peppers. And they're also from the farms, from Jeff's farm, Urban Growth Farm out on the, uh, north side of Yountstown. So that's, uh, what it is. And then we buy locally the eggs, the poultry, uh, the different meat, and that helps the farmers. So we are just so excited. It will say, Mahoney Valley Mobile Market, Trumbull County. Uh, because, you know, Mahoney Valley is all three. So underneath, uh, it'll say, it'll be wrapped on August the nineteenth. So Lisa, I'll need, I, I, wherever you want to take me to take the logo off. If you would send it to me.
Okay.
And then I'll send it and it'll go on. Uh, so many people, so far, we have raised a little over five hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And the truck is paid, Mahoney Valley is paid for. So the only thing I do is just keep it sustainable, keep it going. Churches, one good thing, I think, we're at Saint Paul Lutheran.
I saw that.
Yes. Uh, one of the things, because we have funds from, uh, Mercy Health, then we were able to come over to Trumbull County when you had the storm. We can, we brought the Mahoney Truck over, thanks to, uh, the, the commissioners and the mayor over there. We brought the truck over. So we're excited about, it's really needed, guys.
It absolutely is.
I'm telling you.
This is an innovative program that you guys have come up with.
Yeah.
That has been a, a need in our community for such a long time. We thank you for bringing this to us. Money well spent.
We even took it to the university. And there were international students, it said they had not had fresh fruits in the whole semester. So you know, I went to President Johnson for some fun. So thank you so much. We want to get, Jeff?
Do you have the truck out, the last time you had the truck out there, you guys don't have the truck out there? Well, obviously you don't have our truck out there, but do you have Mahoneys out there for people to see?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Is it out there?
No, 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 not today.
'Cause I remember going in there and it's, it's amazing. It's a small grocery store.
I talk so much, I don't want you to need say something.
I, I am a preacher too, but I will be very free. Um, it was.
What's your name, your name first, sir?
Jeff Stanford. Jeff Stanford. Uh, real briefly, uh, she mentioned it, we brought that truck over here when the storms hit. We stayed here from, uh, about nine o'clock to about six o'clock. We stopped at three stops. We stopped at Harding. We stopped at a church and we stopped at TCAP. And we gave away over seven thousand dollars worth of food in one day. And it was just beautiful to watch all the people and hear the stories of what went on. So we're really excited about bringing it over here. Um, once again, we do, uh, use those vouchers. So we just want to make a, a brief, um, ask if you guys, if you guys would be willing to put it on a line item uh, for us, uh, so we can continue to serve the community abroad. Um, just real, real briefly, we are having our fifth annual Action Charity Golf Tournament. September sixth, I don't know if any of y'all golf, any Tiger Woods in the house. Twenty twenty-four, and it is, it is at the old Avalon Golf Hall. And it will represent and it will help our truck, continue.
Trumbull Truck.
The Trumbull Truck to continue to provide vouchers for this community. Thank you all so much for everything you've done. You made our dream come true. You'll make the dreams of, of hundreds of Trumbull County community come true. Thank you again.
And those vouchers are, thank you, are twenty-five dollars. So it'll say, Mahoney, it'll say, uh, Mahoney Valley, uh, Mahoney Valley Mobile Market, Trumbull Commissioners, twenty-five dollar voucher.
Great. Thank you so much, Rosetta.
Thank you.
Is there a way, um, you said you want to do a ribbon cutting on Tuesday, September tenth?
Yes.
Uh, we have our meetings, of course, every Tuesday right here.
Uh-huh.
Can we, if you're gonna do it here, can we do it right out in front of this building?
Oh, yeah.
Awesome.
Let's do it.
Oh, I, let's do it.
If we do that, then we can bring some department heads, we can bring some of the office.
There's the press release.
Right out front here.
Yeah, 'cause we hadn't put the press release out yet.
Yeah.
All right, we'll do that. Yeah, if you could, 'cause it's, it's big and it'll have the other truck.
Lisa, can you make a note of that and then we'll reserve, we'll have, um, um, Sheriff's Department reserve a couple of spots down there for us or whatever for when the truck comes and we'll do it right out front.
What's your last?
Argano.
Oh, okay. I think I talked to you or meant, seen you before.
Yeah.
Me, okay. Job and Family Services is helping us in Mahoney County.
I see that on there.
Oh, yes, that's right. All right, and so is ten o'clock okay for you?
If you can do ten or ten-thirty, our meeting starts. We can do either or.
Okay, we'll save ten-thirty, but then we'll get here.
What we'll do, we'll start the meeting, so it's an official meeting, then we'll go upstairs, do the ribbon cutting and then come back up.
That's what we'll do. All right.
And of course, Ray already be here, so we'll have the press and.
And it'll be stocked, so you can also shop. Remember, you can use a credit card, debit card, cash. Take it.
I, um, Apple Pay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you so much.
Yes. Everyone have a blessed day.
Thank you.
Karen, it was nice seeing you.
And Rose, get with, uh, get with Lisa, our clerk, and she can make, help you with the press release and logistics and where to park and all that stuff. Okay, anybody else have anything needs to go to the top? And we'll go through this. Um, we're gonna start tomorrow. Unfortunately, we lost another trustee this week, Buzz Governor. Who, um, I mean, anyone that's in north central part of the county, they're familiar with Governor Farms. And they had all the corn last year that, uh, you know, they sold out of every day, you know, usually by, by noon or so. Uh, but Buzz and his family, um, have been kind of like staples in the Mecca Township area for many, many, many years. You go forty-six, all those fields from the S curve all the way up to, uh, Mecca Circle. Uh, most of them are governor properties or places that Buzz had farmed. And as we're talking about sewer and water, that his names come up a million times because, um, the frontage that they own there and the need for, um, state and federal aid to make that possible. So we wouldn't tax the one family, uh, with, with all the, the frontage they have. And he was a Mecca Township trustee. Um, he's got kids and, uh, actually owns some cottages up on Geneva on the lake that he's been spending a lot of time at. And he'll be missed definitely, 'cause he was one of the guys that was just at every community event that he had up there. Before, before he was trustee, trustee was just natural for him to get involved that way and because he's been doing all that stuff anyway. So he was a, he was a good friend to many of us and, you know, he said, that's, that's two, you know, Templeton Champion and Governor and Mecca, both those staying pretty bad because they're, they're staples in those communities. They're not just, um, new trustees or anything by any means. They've been long, long time pillars of those communities. So glad to see that happen. And then we got dispense the reading in a minute, approve the bills, uh, transfer monies, Madam Auditor.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, um, uh, the transfer of monies is actually the second quarter interest transfer. Um, and then I'll just move on to approve the transfer of appropriations. Children's Services Board is building grounds maintenance material. Eastern District Court is increase needed in alcohol monitoring account. Human Resources, there's two of those, an increase needed in computer service and software accounts and also increase needed in telephone account. Planning Commission has two, and they're both for training and seminars. And I'm gonna let Bob do sanitary engineers.
Bob Myren, I'm with sanitary engineers. The first one for two thousand dollars is, uh, for FedEx shipping to return a loaner sewer camera to a company in Florida. And the thousand dollars is for health department vaccines and on-demand drug testing for our employees.
Okay, and Martha, congratulations too. You hit a milestone today in honor of Leukemia Lymphoma Society?
Yes. I, um, I hit, uh, well, I did my longest ride, a little over twenty miles. Longest ride I've ever made in my life. Um, and I'm still trying to finish raising my money. I'm at four seventy-five of five hundred. I'd like to do it today, um, because today is, um, would-be. My younger brother's fifty-seventh birthday and, um, both he and my father died of leukemia. My father died thirty-seven years ago, so that's why I'm, I'm doing the rides. Um, also trying to get into a little better shape myself, uh, because with leukemia in my family and, um, having been a cancer survivor, I know at some point, um, I may face cancer again. And, um, I want to be fighting me. I want to be ready to fight it. Um, but I did, I got over, a little over a hundred and, um.
You majored?
Thank you, Julie. Um.
Thank you, Julie Green.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Julie. Um, but I, I, uh, I get, I did get a hundred and seventy-six miles in in July, so, thank you.
Yay.
Well, that's very impressive. I got out of bed, made it to the shower, walked to the car, walked in the booth.
Like you beat me here. Um.
Well, for everybody, there's different, you know.
Well, and, and I want to say that, um, I had some encouragement from somebody who's kind of a beast on a bike. Um, we call, I'll call it encouragement. It might have been a little bit of bullying too. 'Cause when I was riding through this lightning and the rain and I wanted to stop, I thought, I can't face him if I don't finish this. Um, and we'll move on to number five now before I, uh, start crying.
Very nice. Congratulations on that. Congratulations on hitting your goal, Julie Green. Thank you for putting her in the top.
And I'm gonna actually let Christie do, uh, number five for us.
Yeah, number five is adopt the alternative tax budget at Trumbull County for fiscal year beginning January one.
Christie Sisaric, Trumbull County Auditor's Office. Uh, the alternative tax budget we're asking the commissioners to pass tomorrow is for the fiscal year starting January first, twenty twenty-five. All of the information was downloaded from various municipal programs. Uh, the chart manager was used to get a current listing of the county funds. Account inquiry was used to get the cash balances and we used the date that the form was prepared, which was one day last week. And then central budget was used, um, to compile the June twenty twenty-five level of the budget that the departments prepared, and that was for the estimated resources and appropriations. Now, the purpose of a tax budget, as reported in an auditor state training manual, is to reflect the need for existing or increased tax rates, obtain an apportionment from the county undivided local government fund. It also serves as a source for setting the limitations of appropriations for the next year. And it also serves as a planning tool for commissioners and other officials. One of the big things that we use the alternative tax budget for is that the revenue side will be used by the Trump, uh, by the County Auditor's Office and Budget Commission to prepare the county's official certificate of estimated resources for the fiscal year starting January first, twenty twenty-five. The official certificate starts the county off with estimated resources while the twenty twenty-four financial activity is being reconciled and the First Amendment certificate is being prepared using the actual beginning unencumbered fund balances and a more timely estimate of the twenty twenty-five revenues. Now, the general fund is showing an estimated negative fund balance for twenty twenty-five, for the end of twenty twenty-five. And this is just an estimate based on the June budget level request by all of the general fund departments. This doesn't mean that this is what their November budget level request will be, nor does it mean that these amounts are what will be awarded by the commissioners as part of the actual twenty twenty-five annual appropriation resolution. The June level for the departments is just a big wish list. And, you know, if you see on the general fund, they're requesting like seventy-one million dollars in appropriations. And that's not what will be awarded, but that's at this point what they're asking for. Um, let me share that. Do you guys have any questions on the alternative tax budget?
Ms. Frenchco would like to speak.
Go ahead, it's star six on the phone line. Hit star six, identify yourself. You have one more chance. Hit star six and identify yourself.
Why didn't you tell me you know the way we're ordering them?
Commissioner, if you're there, star six to unmute yourself. What did she say she wanted to see?
Yeah, full time. I told her.
Oh, does it show her there? I know that sounds scary, but it does show her there?
Yes.
Okay. 'Cause we don't, I don't want any issues that we didn't.
No, we, we, we have two people over here that are witnesses.
Okay.
Okay, good.
We, you know.
Okay, one last chance, Commissioner. Hit star six and identify yourself if you're on the line. Okay, moving on. Number six. To adopt the updated Trumbull County capital asset policy dated seven thirty-one twenty-four submitted by the Trumbull County Auditor's Office.
Um, I'm going to, uh, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, I'm gonna let Chrissy Sisaric, um, go over this. And also, um, before I let her do that, I do want to thank her for taking charge of this and doing such a good job on it. Um, as we try to move and make things a little bit better and more compliant and more efficient. She's done a great job with this and also I want to thank Alex for working with her on this.
Thank you. Chrissy Sisaric, Auditor's Office. Um, the county's capital asset policy hasn't been updated since November fourth, two thousand nine. Uh, the updated policy, uh, that we're presenting was compiled by the Auditor's Office in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and accounting practices recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association. Uh, we also consulted with the county's Human Resources Office along with examples approved by other counties. Um, as in the past, the capitalization threshold will be five thousand dollars. These are the assets required to be categorized as a capital asset and included in depreciation calculations. Um, but in the past, items over five hundred dollars were included as capital assets but not depreciated. We feel that that is a small dollar amount. So the new policy gives department heads or elected officials the discretion to classify items with a value greater than a thousand dollars but less than five thousand dollars as a capital asset in the county's accounting program. And, uh, these items will not be depreciated. They'll just be included for, um, uh, purposes of tracking and doing inventory. Um, but items less than a thousand dollars will be classified as a supply expense. We won't be overloading our capital assets system with smaller items that could be tracked at the department level. Um, in the new policy, we.
Um, in the new policy, we cleaned up the estimated useful lives of assets and listed all the major categories as presented on the county's financial statements in the annual comprehensive financial report. We're also working on cleaning up all the sub-classes that we had created from, we brought over from the old system to the new system. Um, there were six pages of sub-classes, you know, so it wasn't just a vehicle, it was like a some contact vehicle. It was a lightweight truck. We don't need that for any purpose, so we're gonna try not to overload our system with things like that too. Um, and then a, a big change in the policy is the requirement of the completion of an annual inventory. The new policy will require inventory to be done every five years. We will have a rolling schedule, so the inventory is done every year, but each department will only have to complete it every five years.
Yeah, really.
It's gonna be nice.
Thank you for entertaining.
Excellent. So, we did take all the ma, the departments that have the biggest, um, capital asset grouping, and we divided those up so that we wouldn't be doing those at, at the same year. We're gonna pick the five biggest and then divide those and put smaller departments each year. So, I will be doing the inventory at each department, we'll only have to do every five.
Very good.
Any questions there, capital asset policy?
No.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving us a very much.
Okay, adopt a resolution determining to proceed with submission to the electors the question of levying a replacement tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation for the purpose of providing or maintaining senior citizen services or facilities. But the county auditor estimates will collect, uh, $3,627,000 annually at an annual rate of .75 mils for each $1 taxable value, which is the same rate as the existing levy, and which amounts to $26 for each $100,000 of the county auditor's appraised value for a period of five years commencing in 2025. First due encounter year 26. If approved by a majority of electors voting thereon. Said levies will be submitted to electors in a general election to be held on November 5th, 2024, and to direct the clerk of this board to certify a copy of said resolution and certificate of the county auditor to the Board of Elections on and before 4:00 PM August 7th, and notify the Board of Elections to cause notice on questions of levying said tax to be given as required by law. This is the replacement on senior services, official language so we can get on the ballot. Does that look correct?
Yes, it does.
Clarifications on that?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, the next one. Adopt a resolution determining to proceed with the submission.
Okay, so this one is a replacement, and it says that it's the same.
The same rate but a higher valuation, they're using the new valuations.
No, it, a replacement, a renewal is the same.
Renewal is the exact same. The replacement as, as presented to us a few weeks ago is using the same valu, is the same millage but with the new appraised values.
Correct. This is Auditor Yoder, that's correct.
So, it'll collect more money cause the appraised values are higher, but it's the same millage.
But it's gonna result in an increase, wait. Okay, because it's, uh, I just, I'm looking at this and it says, which is the same rate, and I, and it just seems a bit misleading because it'll just result in an increase, and I think that should be more clear to the voters.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, that is the legal way to express that. It has been reviewed by my office, and it is correct.
It's reviewed by the prosecutor's office as well.
Yes, so I wanna, yeah, I believe it's been, it's gone through multiple vetting systems here.
Well, I'm just saying that it, it, as a matter of fact, not, uh, like irrelevant. It's irrelevant that it's lawfully correct, as a matter of fact, it's going to create an increase, and I think that that's...
Not, not for everybody. Not for everybody, there are some people that may pay less on this.
For the most part, it's going to create an increase. I just think it needs to be, we need to make sure that that's clear to the public. And then it also says on here, facilities, and I don't know that, I don't believe that that's the correct language because to use facilities could arguably mean that it's used for the, the structure senior. Senior centers would make better sense because the facilities are different than the center. And I asked if that was how the language was for it the last time, and I haven't received anything yet. The facil, the facilities are the buildings, and the buildings are typically, um...
I would think buildings are buildings, facilities could be the location of where activity occurs.
Right, the, the, exactly, but we're talking about the, the center, the activities in the center, not the location, because if you're looking at the location, those fu, fundings could some, sometime down the road, someone can say, well, we're gonna need this to put a roof on our facility, and that is not what the funds go for, and I don't want it to be written as such in that, in the, um, language. Because it, there's a difference between that.
Okay, and you got that opinion from where? Did you get that opinion from any legal means, or is that just your personal opinion?
I'm asking if that, I, I believe that should be corrected. It, it, it says, it says what it says, it's not arguable. I mean, it says facility, we all know what a facility is, that's different than senior service programming. That's the language, something to that effect that should be used, because a facility is a building. Those are, those facilities are at nonprofits, they're at government buildings, and, and we don't want for anyone to ever be able to say that those could be used for improvements, and the way this is written is that they could be used for improvements at the places where those activities...
I guess they're all wrong because the other ones say that as well.
This is a di, well, that's why I asked to see the last year, the last language compared to this one, and, uh, no one has responded yet.
You just asked for those. I did not have time to get those for you.
And as a...
A facility can also be an array of equipment, according to the definition, and they do, there is equipment that is owned by senior services. There are audiovisual equipment, those can be considered facilities also, even though it's not an actual structure.
That's not what the program, I, I, I'm sorry, I was on senior levy council, so I know what they do, I know what goes on there. They're not, it's for services, it's for, if you look at what was recommended to you last week when you voted on it, you'd see that it's for services. It's not, it's not used...
So, they can't buy any of computers or any of their audiovisual equipment they're using? The, the IR stuff, the goggles and stuff that they use, they can't own that?
Right, they, they actually don't do that. They, if you look at, again, you've been a commissioner a couple of years. If you actually would look at what was in front of you on how they bill and how they reimburse for those services, it's not, they don't, they don't use senior levy funds to buy anything or to make improvements to the buildings. I'm just letting you know, it's unfortunate, I mean, you could look at it and see. And, and, and my statement to Lisa is that anytime something comes to us, I, as it's been since I've been here, I, I've been saying I need to see the past. Um, say if there's a new contract, I wanna see a copy of the last one so I can compare changes. This is the new levy language, you should automatically send a copy of the last one. Uh, that's just the standard a, as I've requested since I've been here, so...
Martha Yoder.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, um, Ms. Frenchco hasn't identified herself and needs to do that.
Okay, Attorney Danzo is on his way. We can address this when he gets here.
And then, um, the item before, which was, um, when I was trying, I tried to unmute myself whenever I'm trying to talk, and then it sometimes takes either 20 minutes or, uh, it depends on how long someone sees, sees that. But, um, when, we're looking at the new policy for the capital asset policy, um, with the depreciated life and that type of, um, to identify the useful lives of things. Um, can, can someone talk more about why that's important?
Mrs. Sestarek has left. She, if you have a question, you may, you may give it to her. She wrote the policy, and she'd be glad to answer any questions.
It's not actually a question, I just think it's important because you actually increase efficiency if you can anticipate, um, expenses, uh, associated with when repair and maintenance would be. And that's very important, and I want to point out that Trumbull County still does not have their buildings graded. Does this mean that you are, you now recognize as a board the importance of identifying, uh, identifying the assets and grading them so that you could be aware of what their life expectancy is for financial planning? If that's the case, I think that the county, again, I wanna talk about that again, uh, needs to grade their buildings so that they could do better preventative maintenance and save money so that we don't end up in situations like we have now or have had recently where people are calling 911 cause they're locked in the elevator. I mean, these are things that should be planned, and I would like to see the Board of Commissioners do that.
Well, as Mr. Hodges explained, he's not here to defend himself in past meetings, but they do routinely maintain and plan for all county-owned facilities, properties, buildings, structures, and services.
No, no, they don't, there, there's no...
They don't do it your way, but they do it away.
No, no, he actually said that they don't do it, he thinks it's a waste of time to grade them.
You're absolutely wrong on that. There are maintenance checklists, I've seen them myself for various departments, various buildings.
It's for, it's for, for buildings, no building is graded, he acknowledged that they don't. He said that the record of improvement is in the journal. If that's the case, then, you know, uh, in order to find out the, what's going on in a building, someone would have to do a records request of, of all of the electrical improvements that were journalized at the, at, at every county building by category in order to develop something like that. I, it, it's not practical. They work in maintenance, they need to be able to put together a grading. The trade, the trades would probably help them, they've even caught, they've even had someone...
We know you're pushing for that to try to get donations, we get it, let's move on from that. Mr. Danzo is here, he's gonna answer the next question. You have two minutes, your call right now, you're not, you're not a commissioner as you call in here, you're not a part of the meeting, so you've been granted two minutes, and I've given you a little bit more than that on the phone since you choose not to be here. We're gonna go to Mr. Danzo now and answer the question you had.
If you're recognizing, if you're recognizing me as a general, a person of the general public just as, uh, Ms. Rosetta Carter was of a person of the general public, then I am entitled to equal time. Please don't get ahead of yourselves and violate the law again. If some, if you're...
I think you've had about equal time as Ms. Carter so far.
No, I haven't.
If we look at the timeframe.
Go, go ahead and see. But what I'm saying is you cannot, you cannot give, implement limitations on one person when you don't on someone else as you normally do, especially as you just recognized me as a member of the public.
Well, you are, you're not, you're not officially in this commissioner's meeting, you're not here, you're not part of the quorum right now. So, you missed the Danzo's here, he's glad to answer your question.
Correct, so as a member of the public, since you give them more latitude and don't, um, pass over on, on them, if I'm being treated as a member of public, then I, I would have more time as well. So, that's what I was saying...
Commissioner, you got ample time, can we get back to the agenda and square this away? Mr. Danzo is here.
There isn't, there was a matter...
He took time to come up here to answer your question, he has other obligations, let's get to your question.
Right, and I, I went back to the asset policy and the fact that the county doesn't have preventative maintenance, uh, planning in place, or any of the buildings graded. So, you guys are adopting a, a county capital asset policy just to be in compliance with the state, but you don't do anything to advance efficiency based on...
That's not a state policy. Yeah, it's not a state policy, you're an ORC requirement.
Can I, Alex Stephen Johnson, Department of Human Resources. Commissioner, I, I highly encourage you to recognize that this plan has been in place since 2009. We're not ad, this has been a plan that the commissioners have been adhering to, this is nothing new. Alls we did was streamline it and are trying to make sure that everybody's on the same page and reduce the threshold of $5,000. I, it's actually, I'm actually talking right now, and reduce the threshold from the $5,000 to just clarify what is to be considered a capital asset and what's not. We have departments who are, um, putting in our capital asset system staplers and punch, three-hole punch binder rings. Those, those sorts of things are up to the department's discretion and are beneath the threshold of a capital asset. That's all we were doing, is going through and just cleaning it up and making the verbiage just a little bit more straightforward and easier to read. But again, this capital asset policy has been in place in the county since 2009.
Right, and it's being updated, so why aren't we updating, uh, our inventory of buildings as far as grading and, and grading them at the same time so that we're aware of how, of what elements of the buildings need to be improved in the near future, rather than waiting for things to, like roofs to fly off and roofs to cave in and costing millions of dollars and having, uh, to use bonds and other methods in order to do things that should be easily done with preventative maintenance if things were actually graded as a normal community or business would do.
You do know preventative maintenance is not free. There's a roof going bad, you still have to pay to fix the roof. If there's, if there's...
Okay, all right.
If something's on a building, you still have to pay to fix it. It's not free just cause you catch it.
You are, you are incapable of understanding what grading buildings, inventorying them, grading them, and preventative maintenance is.
Commissioner, we have millions of dollars into our assets over the past two years. You've been a part of it.
I am, I am sure you both could try to understand...
We've improved all of our assets to the tune of over $3 million over the last two years. That, we have done that, we have done that.
Idea, you have no idea what you're doing.
And as far as you saying we, we need to bond things out, that's what you do with larger projects, you bond them out. No county pays for an asset like that in cash.
Okay.
You should know that by now, you've been a commissioner four years.
You've been here for, for so long and allowed Trumbull County buildings to literally deteriorate to the point where things are falling apart. You've been here for a period of time, we've had electric...
Commissioner, 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 you're on Facebook today saying that two of your rental units are falling apart, dilapidated, you can't rent them out, you're looking for someone to come and fix them. Where was your preventative maintenance on your rental units that you own?
We have, we have fire...
You have two deplorable condition places you're trying to rent. You're on Facebook today asking someone, please come help me fix them, I got boilers that aren't working, I got problems, someone needs to live in there and work.
You have no, you have, you're sitting here doing...
Cut her off. Sorry.
Cut her off, cut her off.
Bye-bye.
Don't worry about your rental units that are in deplorable condition on today on social media. You're asking people to come and do something with them. Where was your preventative maintenance with those? Apparently you don't have any. Maybe you call the union so they can grade them for you. You maybe, maybe you can get someone else to come and grade them for you, but... Phil, can we get back to, um, the agenda item number seven, please? She asked about facilities. She said with the replacement levy, it says maintaining senior citizen services or facilities.
Okay.
She views facilities as a building, structure, she doesn't want anyone to get the implication or imply that they could put a roof on a building or somewhere where we have senior services. I told her definition of facility isn't just a building or structure, it could be equipment that's owned, that's in a, in a building or structure, it's owned by the organization. What, what are your, what is your thought on leaving the word facilities?
Well, I think, first of all, I think you're right, I think that's, that's the way that works, uh, that it's not necessarily, uh, uh, it's not necessarily building a new building or, or doing that. The other thing too that's kind of more important, just generally with, uh, by the way, it's built into, it's the prosecutor's office, sorry. Um, I, the other thing too that's important to understand about replacement and renewal levies, and you guys might know this already, but for anybody who's listening that, that maybe doesn't see these all the time, um, the language that we put in these resolutions comes straight out of the revised code. So, in other words, when it comes time for a senior levy, the senior levy language is in, uh, it's 570519 something, but there's a, there's a specific section that if you want a senior levy, here are the words that go into that levy. And traditionally, over the years, the way we've done virtually every levy in the county is that we use all of the words that the revised code has in it. You are permitted to cut words out, but you can't add anything back in. So, the thing is, with this being a replacement levy with renewal levies, you are generally bound to the language that was, that came before it. So, you can't increase... So you can't increase the scope of levies. You don't generally change the scope of levies because that's what the voters approved in the additional levy when they approved it, and that's what that levy will be for forever. And we've cautioned clients over the years, you know, let's just use the example of a, a fire levy. Fire and EMS is sometimes combined in the statute. They'll say, we don't want the EMS language. We can take that out if you do a new EMS levy, but you can never add it back in. So a lot of times what places will do is they'll include fire and EMS just because ten years, twenty years down the road, maybe they'll want an EMS, and they'll be allowed to use that money for that purpose. The point of this is really just to make sure that the voters have a very clear picture of what that money could be used for. And, uh, and that's what this does. It's, it could in theory be used for, uh, you know, for senior services and facilities. But again, facilities is a little bit more of a broad term than just, uh, building a building or putting a roof on a building necessarily.
To, to Mr. Danso's point, when I, when you.
Oh, Danza.
I was going to get there, but just give me a second. To talk about what Mr. Danso was saying, Alex Stephen Johnson, Bush, Human Resources Department. Um, when you think about facilities, their scope is somebody that we contract with through the senior levy services. They obviously have to utilize a facility in order to put on that benefit for those seniors. Do you understand what we're, what we're saying when you think about what we do? Their scope travels to different facilities. There's locations in Cortland. There's locations in Niles. There's locations in Durant. So those facilities then fall under that service is what we're trying to, is the way I read it. And then also I would like to reiterate what Bill Danso said. Mr. Danso, excuse me. Sorry, Bill. We're kind of on a first name basis right now. Um, but ORC fifty seven oh five point seven one is very specific, and the language is directly from there. So the language that you see in this is exactly what he just said, which I stay indirect. The electors of the county may initiate the question of a tax levy for support of senior citizen services or facilities, and that's.
Right on the revised code.
Right here.
Wow. Imagine that.
Thank you.
I have another question regarding these.
But I, but I think the revised code might be wrong. Commissioner Frenchco might be the right one in the revised code.
Never know.
Could be wrong. We might need to get legal clarification from some scholars and Attorney General. That could be wrong.
I'm not an attorney, so I don't put my nose in business where it's.
Martha, you're a Trumbull County auditor. I think, um, did you get the prior language? Were you able to find that prior language?
I did find it.
And it's the same?
I haven't looked at it yet, but I need full look.
Well, if that's right on the revised code, that's all right.
I would imagine.
Again, Bill Danso from Prosecutors Office, I would say again that I, um, another person in our office, another attorney drafted the, the language on this. But I can be virtually certain that she did this based on the prior levy because that's how renewals and replacements always go. They always mirror what the first initial levy said, and that comes right from the revised code, and that's. Uh, so that, that's why this says what it does.
So Bill, we, we voted on this already, obviously, but not in this form, like to put it on this language for the ballot, but we voted on these issues. Is there discussion about for or against during this time, or is that?
In theory, there could be. So there's, with levy process and procedure, there's two resolutions. The first resolution that you guys passed said, hey, it, it's, we, we call it the, the resolution of necessity. You declare that it's necessary to have this additional money beyond the, the traditional money that the county generates for seniors purposes. And you vote then to send that to the county auditor to give you a real number of what that will generate. So that went down to the auditor's office. The form gets filled out down there of how much this levy will generate based on the current, you know, valuation for the replacement in particular. And then it comes back to you guys with the numbers in it like this. So this second one is the resolution to determine to proceed with the levy. So what you're essentially doing in this step is saying, we've gotten the numbers from the auditor's office based on what we thought we needed, and we're looking at it one more time to make sure this is actually what we need or what we, what we want to proceed with. And if so, you, you vote on this. Uh, generally speaking, that is a, almost a foregone conclusion because you guys have put the thought into this ahead of time. You kind of knew what it was going to generate, the differences in the numbers. This is almost a formality. In, in a rare case, could there be one where you look at it and you say, oh, my goodness, this doesn't generate as much as we thought, or it generates way more than we expected? Let's get back to the drawing board and, and maybe do a different, a different thing, you know, renewal, replacement, you know, uh, renewal and increase, decrease. That almost never happens though. But it is technically within your power to, to say, yeah, you know what, this, this isn't what we wanted to do after all.
But at what point do we stop? Do, do the commissioners not, um, have discussion about for or against the levy? Because at some point, we shouldn't have those discussions. Am I correct?
Okay, I, that's a different question, I guess. You know, this is, this is the procedural legal routine stuff. Uh, there does get to be a question then about supporting levies and not supporting levies. Those are governed by the section of the code that, that deals with public officials' restriction on campaigning, essentially. I think it's nine point oh three of the revised code. I'm getting that one and maybe one other. It's either nine point two oh or nine point oh three. But in any case, those, the restrictions, there are restrictions there that, that you guys want to make sure you're aware of on, uh, public officials. You know, again, uh, they sort of lump levies in the same way as, as campaigning for and against candidates and issues and all that. So, uh, you know, essentially the, the prohibition is on using your office to, to promote political causes. So, you know, this routine stuff like this, this is required by law. You know, you have authority to issue or to put levies on the ballot to oversee it. Campaigning is a different story.
And then I, Alex Stephen Johnson, Bush, Human Resources, if I can, I just really would like to stress the amount of magnitude because I, I hear very clearly that somebody or that certain people, and if maybe one doesn't understand, maybe the public doesn't understand, but the processes that these things go through, and Bill Danso touched on it a little bit. I mean, our clerk starts the process, the process starts here. But the amount of hands and offices that these levies and planning go through, the amount of legal checks, the amount of review, the language, the dollar amounts associated. And then after this, once it gets recognized, you know, on the agenda tomorrow, it then gets sent to the Board of Elections to certify it with a fee. I mean, so this is, this is a process that is of a major magnitude and not something to be scoffed at and that we're not doing correctly. This is a process that we are following to a T and have followed, and I'm not, not really sure why we're going to continue to put doubt in public's eyes that we're not doing something correctly when we're actually just adhering to policies.
Very well. And, and one more thing, you know, Bill Danso, again, I just, and that's exactly right. From then on, once, if this gets approved by you guys.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put the topic forward, but.
No, 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 no. That's, that's, that's right. And, and that's a good reminder. It does, it goes to the Board of Elections. It goes ultimately to the Secretary of State for ballot approval. And then ultimately, as we all know, it goes to the voters. And that's the, that's the whole goal of all of what we're doing now is to make sure it's all correct, to present to them correctly. And then they make the choice. That's, that's ultimately who's going to do this.
Are you able to hang around for a few minutes?
Um, I, I probably can. I, I got an appointment downstairs, but that's okay. I'll stick around for a little bit.
Okay. Um, we'll get through this a little bit. I, I want you, Mr. S T., Mr. Velasquez here, and I'd like for you to be here for that part to start with the parking issue. We can wrap this up real quick. Uh, the next one. Adopt a resolution determining to proceed with the submissions of the electors. The question of levying a renewal tax in excess of the ten mil limitation for the purpose of providing for the necessary requirements of the Trumbull County Board of Developmental Disabilities for the operation, programs, and services by the board, including the Fairhaven Programs and for the acquisition, construction, renovation, financing, maintenance, and operation of mental retardation developmental disability facilities that the county auditor estimates will collect seven million, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand annually in an annual tax rate of two point two five mils for each one dollar taxable value, which is the same rate as existing levy, and which amounts to an estimated effective rate of fifty-two dollars for each hundred thousand dollars the county auditor's appraised value for a period of ten years commencing in two thousand twenty-five. First due in calendar year two thousand twenty-six, if approved by the majority of the electors voting thereon. Said levy shall be submitted to electors in general election to be held November five, two thousand twenty-four, and a direct clerk court to certify a copy of said resolution and certificate of the county auditor of the Board of Elections honor before four P M., August seven, two thousand twenty-four, and notify said Board of Elections to cause notice on the questions of levying said tax to be given as required by law. Okay, so that language I'm sure is from previous language, renewal, ten years, uh, two point two five mils. Number nine, adopt a resolution determining to proceed with the submissions of electors. Question of levying a renewal tax in excess of the ten mil limitation for the purpose of support of children's services and the care and placement of children in Trumbull County, Ohio, that the county auditor estimates will collect two million, seven hundred and sixty-three thousand annually in annual tax rate of point eight mils for each one dollar taxable value, which is the same rate as existing levy, and which amounts to an estimated effective rate of nineteen dollars for each hundred thousand dollars the county auditor's appraised value for a period of ten years commencing in two thousand twenty-five, first due in calendar year two thousand twenty-six, if approved by the majority of electors voting thereon. Said levy shall be submitted to electors in a general election to be held November five, two thousand twenty-four, and a direct clerk of this board to certify a copy of said resolution and certificate of the county auditor that the Board of Elections honor before four P M., August seven, two thousand twenty-four, notify Board of Elections to cause notice on the question of levying such tax to be given as required by law. So children's services, renewal, same rate. Then finally, adopt a resolution determining to proceed with submissions of electors. The question of levying a renewal tax in the excess of ten mil limitation for the purpose of operation of alcohol and drug addiction programs and mental health programs that the county auditor estimates will collect three million, four hundred and fifty-four thousand annually at a tax rate of one mil for each one dollar taxable value, which is the same rate as existing levy, and which amounts to an effective rate of twenty-three dollars for each hundred thousand dollars the county auditor's appraised value for a period of ten years. First due in calendar year two thousand twenty-six, if approved by the majority of the electors voting thereon. Said levy shall be submitted to the electors in a general election to be held November five, two thousand twenty-four, and a direct clerk of this board to certify a copy of said resolution and certificate of the county auditor of the Board of Elections honor before four P M., August seven, and notify said Board of Elections to cause notice on the question of levying said tax to be given as required by law. So four levies on the ballot this year that are county-related, and if you add them all up, the average homeowner will pay ten dollars more than what they've been paying before in the past on each hundred thousand dollar value of a house. So probably twenty bucks, I'd say probably for the average for the county, or more, or less, uh, more, all four combined. Three renewals, one replacement. And that's not to mention school levies and police levies and fires. That's just the county stuff. Any questions on those? Okay, number eleven, receiving place on file monthly activities for Trumbull County Dog Countering for June. Number twelve, concur with engineer, close, uh, Girdle Road in Farmington Township Monday, July twenty-ninth through Friday, August twenty-third for bridge replacement. Thirteen, concur with engineer to grant special permit for Cindy Crump, Enderly and Sons, Ordiski Brothers, Renshacks Trucking. Concur to Trumbull County engineer to grant right-of-way permit for cable construction, permit one, two, three, and four. And that is, uh, doing some type of.
Fiber optics.
Fiber optic up in the northern part of the county, which is good. Barkley North, Starred Hayes, Mayburn, and Davis Peck. Fifteen, authorize Board of Commissioners clerk to advertise for sealed bids for the TH one eighty-five C Bushnell Camel Resurfacing Project. The project includes the resurfacing of Bushnell Camel Road in Vernon Township between State Route eighty-eight and Route five, being funded by ARPA funds in accordance with the road repair agreement between Trumbull County Commissioners, the engineer, and Vernon Township.
Commissioner, can I have a point of privilege?
Yes.
Get rid of something real quick. Can we, hang on for about five minutes?
Sure can. You can take a little pause. Okay, number sixteen, approve the retirement and present the resolution, Mr. Allen Prox, in his position of dispatcher for Trumbull County nine one one. He'll be retiring August first. Thirty years of service to Trumbull County. Board of Commissioners staff would like to pay a fond farewell to Allen. Wish him many years of happiness, good health, and relaxation for which he is most deserving. And this Prox has had some health issues lately, so we wish him the best on that. And he was actually there when he made the transition, um, thirty years ago from the Sheriff's Department to nine one one as it is now. So he was one of the, uh, original employees from there. Take fifteen words on this.
Uh, D C McDona nine one one director. Unfortunately, because I've only been here for just over a year, well, tomorrow will be a year. Um, I only got to work with Allen for a brief period of time, but, um, he's a heck of a guy, and everybody has nothing but nice things to say about him, so we're definitely going to miss him. Obviously, he was one of the stalwarts there that always showed up and did his job, so hopefully he enjoys his retirement and has a long, long time reaping benefits of all those years.
Yeah, I've worked the fire desk quite often, and I think every fireman in the county, every fire chief, uh, is thankful that Allen was there with a calm, cool voice over thirty years of service when, uh, their time of need. So, uh, he will definitely be missed. Okay, number seventeen. Prove the personnel action for the appointment of Ms. Mimosa Long to the position of custodian, pay range three, fourteen forty-five an hour. The maintenance department effective Monday, August fifth pursuant to the authorized job posting of March eighth through the eighteenth. She successfully completed a drug screen and background check. So that will bring us up a little closer to the goal of what we need. I think maintenance wi- or, uh, custodian wise, that may be full.
Alex Stephen Johnson, Bush, custodians we're not, uh, too bad on. We actually only needed two. She would have fulfilled one of the two. We have another going through the background process currently. Uh, this result has not come back yet, so we're pending on that, which would have made us full. Uh, however, Mr. Pashani went to groundskeeper, uh, from an afternoon custodian. So we just have one additional opening, uh, and we have been interviewing for the past two weeks to try to get somebody to fulfill that position.
And eighteen. Prove the personnel action for the appointment of Mr. Larry Keller, the, his full-time position of telecommunicator in Trumbull County nine one one department, earning seventeen forty-eight an hour, effective Monday, August fifth, uh, per H R. He will serve a hundred and eighty-day probation period, successfully passed pre-employment exam and background check. So that, as we lose Allen, we had no net gain, but we have a, even with where we are as of today. So we're working on it. And you've got how many D C. are in training right now, or how many are, are attempting?
D C McDona nine one one director. Um, we currently have one in training right now. Um, Larry will start next week, so that'll put us at two. Um, we're still, um, in the background process for supervisor positions, also still doing dispatch interviews. Um, we've had over fifty-three applicants. We sent out the critical testing, and, uh, one of the concerns we had with that was it's limiting our field. What we're realizing is there aren't qualified candidates. We've had about eight total that have passed the critical test. Um, so now we've gone down into like level two of those who just maybe failed like a portion of it, um, but were still recommended based on the personality testing. So we're doing backgrounds on those and more interviews, and we're hoping to get at least two more dispatchers started. Um, obviously, we can't take on more than probably four new employees at a time, so with having supervisor slots, we want to fill two. We don't want to burden the staff that's already, you know, short, um, with having to train four to six people because that's just going to put a hindrance on them as well. Um, we're hoping to, to get those positions filled. We're still taking applications as usual all the time. So that's kind of where we're at with it right now.
Thank you. Alex, as far as jobs, I know I saw it on Indeed, and if you go to the Trumbull County website, uh, we have the positions that are open. Trumbull County Commissioners website, I believe. They can link through. Is that what it is?
Uh-huh. Do you mind? Yeah. I mean, yours is mine, but it's to the H R website, but it's linked to the Commissioners website, yes. But you could also go to Trumbull County Human Resources, and it's all right there, and it's beautiful, and you can.
I didn't see any maintenance positions on there. Is that posting already closed through the maintenance supervisor, assistant supervisor and get on?
So we take it down. We, they go up as soon as they come down. So with the posting day, uh, non-bargaining is usually fifteen is what our personnel policy says. So yes, that's been down. We're reviewing those, uh, applicants right now. There was twelve applicants working through my grid. Um, that's one that I'm taking on. My team each handles kind of a little bit of each department just because there's so many job postings that there, and there's only three of us. Um, also too, if you'll see on our website, we don't just post jobs just for, you know, commissioners entities, obviously. We post jobs for the auditor's office. We post jobs for NEOC. I mean, we're all over the place. We have juvenile detention jobs out there. We have kitchen jobs out there. I mean, there's multiple jobs, so I highly encourage everybody. Our website is beautiful, revamped with I T. Thank you very much. And it's a one-click, uh, it'll link you to J F S apps. It'll link you to, uh, corrections officer apps. It'll link you to nine one one apps. It's a one-stop shop, and I highly encourage everybody to utilize it.
And they can just go to all Trumbull County Commissioners and then click on that.
Trumbull County Human Resources would be what I would suggest. I mean, you could still get there through the commissioners. It, it's hyperlinked through the commissioners because obviously we're underneath, I'm underneath, we are underneath you guys. Um, but Trumbull County Human Resources is the best place. Um, all of our emails, all of our contacts are on there, and trust me, people. Um, all of our emails, all of our contacts are on there and trust me, people find us all day, every day, so it's working.
Hey, very good. All right, authorize Maro Cantal Mesa, Trumbull County Commissioner to execute the subdivision of participation and release form and any other required documents on behalf of Trumbull County as a government entity to allow Trumbull County to participate in the Kroger settlement agreement dated March twenty second, twenty twenty four regarding counties claims pending in inray national prescription opiate litigation, M D L number twenty eight oh four. Commissioner Cantal Mesa has established a doctor's status account on behalf of Trumbull County from prior opioid litigation settlements. Trumbull County Opioid Litigation Council has recommended acceptance of this settlement by the county.
So Commissioner, the two um litigation uh issues that we're involved in here, this is the one Ohio settlement, uh, the national settlement that's um in the approximate ballpark of of one point two billion, would that be billion dollars, uh, over the course of eleven years to thirty three different states, uh, and that includes different subdivisions and different entities within the state, so we don't know the exact number right now, but but this settlement is is, I believe it's one point four billion, but one point two billion will be distributed um uh over an eleven year period to these thirty three different states and all the entities that comprise those states.
Commissioner, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, um, what Commissioner Cantal Mesa has said is correct, I just want to add a little bit to it, um, you did say one point two billion, the remainder of that one point four million actually will go to Native American tribes as well as lawyers, of course, lawyer's fees and costs, right? Um, Kroger actually has stores in thirty five states, there are thirty three settling states.
Yes.
Um, the attorneys that um the commissioners have utilized for this, uh Attorney Napoli in New York and Attorney Galucci in Cleveland have recommended the settling, it also um needs to be done uh by, I believe, August tenth, which is why we put it on the agenda so that we could get this completed. Also, as I I think you probably read in there, that the reason that Commissioner Cantal Mesa is named is because he already has an established account.
Excellent. And then there's one more pending out there.
Yes, that's that's another large one as well, so, um, but that is also in the appeals process right now, so we're sort of unsure.
Okay, number twenty, authorize change order four for thirty day no cost time extension for the contract with M J D Excavating for the Heat and Shoot Sanitary Sewer Household Connection Project, Weathersfield Township, funded through P Y twenty twenty two, Community Development Block Grant Residential Public Infrastructure Grant Program and the American Rescue Plan and authorize Dunning Wille President of Trumbull County Commissioners to sign any related documents.
Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning Commission. Item twenty and twenty one are similar, this is the tail end of the Heat and Shoot Sanitary Sewer Project at Weathersfield Township, we've been working on this for several years with the sanitary engineers office and as we, as typical with these types of projects, when you're out in the field connecting houses, even though all of the households were notified multiple times, a lot of times they wait to reach out and say, hey, how can I get assistance? And so um these two contractors uh are doing a few more recently income qualified households. We have until September thirtieth to finalize a particular grant program, and so this will be most likely the, one of the last things we have on regarding this, and I think we've connected quite a few entities, I don't know the exact number, it's upwards of seventy households, I believe, between the two funding sources.
Okay, then we'll skip over to twenty two. Accept maintenance fund issued by auto owners mutual insurance company for the P Y twenty twenty three H S T S Reserve Program for three home sewage treatment systems installed by Proscape Septic and Landscape Contractors. Proscape Septic and Landscape Contractors completed installation of three home sewage treatment systems in Bloomfield, Braceville, and Johnson Townships funded through the P Y twenty twenty three H S T S Reserve Program. Contract work awarded to Proscape Septic and Landscape Contract in March twenty twenty four is complete, the final payment has been requested. The work is approved by Trumbull County Combined Health District and Trumbull County Building Department. Maintenance bond an amount of twenty percent, ninety nine hundred and sixty dollars of the final project cost forty nine thousand eight hundred and is valid for a period of two years as required by the contract documents commencing June twenty five, twenty twenty four and ending June twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning Commission, thank you. This is a good example of another good program that we've been administering since two thousand and ten when we had the first rescue plan funds in place. We've helped hundreds of households replace their failing onsite or off-lot septic systems in a collaborative effort with the Trumbull County Building Official and the Trumbull County Combined Health District. Um, we were able to administer this program without outside consulting firms typically when dealing with the H S T Ss, and so um this is just a standard procedure for finalizing a contract for uh one of our installers, and we've pretty much encumbered or appropriated all of the funds for the twenty three and the twenty four program for assisting people on our waitlist, we have about twenty or so still outstanding that we'll take a look at assisting next year.
Hey, fantastic. And the bond is just normal procedure, in case something happens down the road, we take hold that interest for two years?
Right, so maintenance bonds are automatic um expiring bonds and for the next two years, we always start them on the date that the Trumbull County Combined Health District gives their final approval, because their sanitarians actually go out there and inspect it and approve it and have a signed document. And so from two years from that date, if there's anything related to any issues with the installation, with the settling of the site, with the system itself, then those contractors or installers will go out there and address them.
All right, twenty three, amend agenda item number twelve, July seventeen, twenty twenty four Commissioners regular meeting to authorize advertising on public notice and newspaper with general circulation focusing the Tribune Chronicle in July twenty second, twenty twenty four, announcing the timeframe for and location of the request, price proposal packets for the P Y twenty four Community Development Block Grant, Critical Infrastructure Grant, Program Revolving Loan Fund, Townsend Avenue Storm Drainage Infrastructure Improvement Project. Uh, the Trumbull County Planning Commission will submit the advertisement through column and pay for the advertisement through fund. Amendment is necessary to correct the fund number.
Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning, this is just a miracle error, so we're just uh, it had already been paid for through one fund and because grants are monitored so closely, we have to make sure it's paid out of the correct fund, so we caught that and um with the help of our auditor's office staff, we're able to fix that through a journal or something, journal fix.
Okay, twenty four, approve the detailed drawings for the Sheraton Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, Notice County Project five S twenty three, the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District.
Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, uh Commissioners, this is that sewer line we're running up to the Baker Elementary School in Diana Township, uh, you allocated A R P funds to assist in the finance of this, the design is complete and uh we need you to send a cover sheet of the drawing so we can send it to the E P A and B T I. Do you have the drawing with you or is that something to bring tomorrow? I'll bring it tomorrow, I'll bring the cover sheet for signature.
Okay. Twenty five, authorize Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, to issue the notice to proceed to United Earthworks for construction of contract A of the State Road Water Regionalization Project.
Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, uh Commissioners, twenty five and twenty six go hand in hand, this is our state uh road regionalization project um being funded through um Ohio E P A Water, W S R L A. Um, and the first project is for the extension of the water mains within the project area and the second one is for booster pump station.
Okay, and the second one is Utility Contracting, Inc.
Yes.
Twenty seven is an ARPA fund correction for the Optimus Club, and that's just changing who the check is made out to, it is going from uh Optimus Club to Optimus Club Foundation of Bezetta Cortland pursuant to their match, to match up with their W nine.
Um, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, I just wanna uh explain, sometimes when you have these small little nonprofits, you have uh transition issues from one regime to another and sometimes things get a little confused. Um, we've had this happen a couple of times now, we had it with Leveesburg and also with this one, the name has to match the W nine. Um, one of the things that Attorney Rogers has said that she will do from now on so that we don't have to keep going back and fixing these is she will request the W nine as she is preparing the agreement itself, so so the name will match for us, so she's helping us out in that way and hopefully um this will be the last time we have to do what it is.
Okay, approve contract bind between Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services and Job Works, Inc. Job Works Education and Training Systems in amount not to exceed four hundred forty one thousand eight twenty, the agreement will be in effect for um through September thirtieth.
Yes, John Gargano, Director of Job and Family Services, this is for the employer of record and payroll services for seventy five individuals um that are in the work program with Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services to gain work experience and also to gain pay uh pay, but also enable them to uh earn a paycheck, but also develop a work history and reference from employers. Uh Commissioners, this would have been brought sooner, however, when we had the, it's a template that we use and we sent it out to the uh Job Works, uh, there had to be a correction and the date was still dated for twenty twenty three instead of twenty twenty four, so we had to send it back. The individual, uh, the chief operating officer then was on vacation for two or three weeks, so we finally got it back and uh we're putting it on the agenda, they're providing those services already.
That concludes our regular agenda items for today. Anybody else have anything to regurgitate? Gary?
Uh Commissioners, I wanted to uh just give you a little briefing here on some of the financial issues with projects that uh I'm running into and to uh get your concurrence on what it is that I want to do, or hopefully get it. Uh, the whole handout that I gave you, right now on, there's some residual A R P funds out there on two of the projects, one was that contract K water line, uh, our allocation for that was three hundred twenty five thousand and because uh engineering costs weren't eligible and there's some residual left over from that. And uh actually, there's a hundred and fourteen thousand or so of residual funds in that contract K account, the project's finished, I'm not, we're not gonna spend that anymore on contract K. On Heat and Shoots, um, I left aside funds for these connections that Julie and I have been working on out there for the people who didn't qualify for C D B G, uh thresholds were higher for A R P, while there were some residual funds from Heat and Shoot there of about twenty four thousand, but we have a total of a hundred and thirty eight thousand of A R P residual funds there. Um, there's also some potential residual funds out there for uh the Stillwagon Road Petition Project, because that one hasn't passed a public hearing yet, and also on the Scott Street Sewer Connections, uh, we put out uh nine hundred thousand dollars for those Scott Street Sewer Connections and thus far, I think Emily has qualified seventy three of them, and uh our average cost on those in the Heat and Shoot area was about eighty five hundred apiece, so I'm coming up with about six hundred and twenty thousand that we can estimate out of that nine hundred thousand that we're gonna need, and I'm sure we'll get more applicants, more qualifiers since then, but I'm seeing a potential that there may be a couple hundred thousand there, okay? Now, or I'm short on on funds, the same thing with the Still Stillwagon Road Project, when we got the allocation of two hundred and fifty thousand, it was to bring the tentative assessments down to about fifty dollars a foot. Now, based on the bids we've got on these last few water projects, that fifty dollars a foot is going to be unattainable. So I would like to, um, we would, we need to move this one to a public hearing, and I would like to be able to count on some of that residual, that hundred and thirty eight thousand, to bring these assessments back down, uh, increase the amount going to Stillwagon from A R P by using these residual funds listed in the top part, that hundred and thirty eight thousand, to present a project to them, to to get them to at least sixty dollars a front foot. Now, if that passes the public hearing, great, we we gave the residents out there a discount on this petition project for the water, and if it doesn't pass the public hearing, I would like the entire two hundred and fifty thousand to go to Meadow Brook. Meadow Brook, we, Julie and I, we've been banging our head against the wall with the Ohio Department of Development for the past month, over their scheduling of accepting the uh C D B G grant that we need for that, it's a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, and you can use the money to, for the connections for the L M Is. Now, they didn't, they normally start accepting the applications in the beginning of July, well, they're not, they're not even accepting the applications until the end of August, and then be due to their restrictions, you're not allowed to advertise that project or bid it out, and we're estimating it won't be until sometime in October or November. And in order for us to keep the four million dollars of principal forgiveness from Ohio E P A, we have to have that project awarded by mid-November, or we lose four million, so pretty much the C D B G is out the window on Meadow Brook, so that's where I'm at, yes, Commissioner.
Is it more wise to just put the two hundred and fifty into Meadow Brook and just be done with it?
Well, let's take it to the public hearing and it, for Stillwagon, and and then let's see if if it gets passed, Elm Road is the only water project that has passed in the past thirty years over there for a water petition project.
That's the thing.
Uh, let's still present it to the residents out there, let's not be unfair to them, and that's my next order of business, let's have the public hearing for Stillwagon, let me, I don't want to walk in there and say, oh, seventy five dollars a foot, let's give it, give it a fair shake and let's at least use these residual funds to drop it down to sixty dollars up or from foot and see if that's affordable for them. If they do turn it down, then that helps Meadow Brook, if they don't, if they don't, we're we're gonna have to figure out some way of getting some funds in there for those Meadow Brook connections.
Sure.
And hopefully by then, maybe we'll hear something about Scott Street, so.
You want to talk about that?
Uh, well, I'll I'll get to that.
All right.
But anyways, that that's, that's why it's urgent that we move Stillwagon forward, but I need your your permission to be able to present to them that I can use some of those residual funds that we have right now to reduce those assessments for that public hearing.
Um, Martha, you're Trumbull County Auditor, the only thing that I would just caution, and I think it's probably gonna be justified, is just to be on the safe side to run some of these reallocations by Attorney Rogers to make sure that we're doing everything exactly the way we should. What I'd like to go ahead and do is I can send her what you gave me, I'll scan it out, and I'll send her an email, I'll C C you on it, and that way if she has questions about what you actually want to do, she can talk to you directly and we can kind of get this worked out.
Okay.
If that's okay with you.
All right, okay, but but it'll be a while before we are gonna do any actual reallocation, we have to have a public hearing first to see if
Right, but it's it's good to sort of get on top of it right now with her, because you know, sometimes things take a little bit of time with her, I'll be glad to just go ahead and and you know, you and I talked about this earlier.
Yeah, yeah, we already talked.
But but I um, I think it will be good to just um get this to her as soon as I can, um, maybe today, and that way we can get the ball rolling.
Okay.
Mother, we have to allocate the money by the end of the year, but what about the money that comes back that's left over like this, if this will come back next year?
Well, if we, if we, well, first of all, it has to be obligated, so that means it either has to be encumbered or it has to be done through that M O U's process that we were talking about.
Right.
So we have So, we have to do one of those two things with this money before the end of the year. Now, if we do that, and there's money left, then we can reallocate it.
We can, sure.
Yeah, according to federal, but we have to do this part before the end of the year.
Right, and, and I have that in mind, too, that's why I need to get Stillwagon to that public hearing. Let's get that, let's get that out of the way, that'll probably take us somewhere into September, October. Then we can talk about, you know, based on those results, how we can reallocate, we'll have to wait until the year to make that happen.
Uh, I'll cancel, May, so, Commissioner, do we know, I mean, obviously, we're not gonna know until the public hearing, but do we know from the interest surveys, or?
They signed petitions, uh, they had seventy-five percent approval on the petitions on Stillwagon, so, so let's say, we don't know how, how, how they're going to take it.
I know, you can get kind of.
How desperate are they for the water?
Yes. Typically, water projects do not go through in the, actually.
Yes, Elm Road was an exception, that, that one made it, and it didn't make it by a landslide.
Right.
Yeah, so, uh, so let's see.
I just noticed that Meadow Brook project is a consent decree project, and we need to get that.
Uh, we need to have a contract awarded by, uh, mid-November, like I said, or we lose four million dollars on that. Wh- which brings me to my second paragraph there about Meadow Brook. Basically, I have all financing in place, but I just have no way to connect the LMIs. There, there's no way we can go into that without having, with that public hearing, without having something in there to say, there's some assistance for you for your, for your house connections. So, that's the only thing holding me from taking this to the public hearing now. Um, which brings me to the third, well, we've talked about Meadow Brook and Stillwagon up, but Crane Drive, that's another project. If you look, look at the pack I gave you, the third, uh, sheet deep into that, you can see, this is that area up there, uh, behind McKinley Heights. MS Consultants, they gave me an original cost estimate on this, and it was around two point, uh, now, it's on the next sheet, two, a little over two million dollars. They came back after the design's done, and things up to three point one million dollars. So, I mean, the, the price of this, it's inflation, it's, uh, um, price of materials, uh, supply chain, uh, anyway, their new estimate, it's around three million dollars. I have, I got a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar OPWC grant in the last round. And what I am, want to do is send that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars back to the district and put in for one point five million this round. I did this before on, uh, the Jacobs Road projects, and that's how I got one point five million for Meadow Brook, um, doing that. But I just wanted to, we'll have to have a resolution on the agenda for that, but before I move forward with it, I wanted to let you know why we're doing that, to be able to cover this funding gap.
Yeah.
And I was also counting on a CDBG grant in that area also, and we were surprised that we couldn't pass the income survey. Uh, the McKinley Heights area, you would think that, you know, oh, they would definitely be CDBG eligible, but they weren't. So, this is one of the steps that we need to take in that direction to make this, uh, project happen, is to, um, send back seven hundred and fifty thousand and then ask for one point five million. And I was successful doing this before, and I'm confident that we'll be able to do it again.
Hopefully, third time's the charm.
Yes.
Julie Green, Chomo County, we're on our third RPIC, uh, proposal for the year.
Yeah, yeah.
Hopefully, the third time's the charm.
All right, and the last one I have on there, if you look at the last map on the page that I get, the last map in your package, Eric, Commissioner, Commissioner here. The last sheet in your package, Blueprint Phase Two. Currently, the projects that I will nominate for next year for the principal forgiveness only includes that little orange se- segments down there for the possible extension here. Looking at, um, we can get the drawings done for that before March of next year. I can, um, I wanna go for principal forgiveness and just take out all these sections. I was gonna do a Phase Two and a Phase Three to make this happen, I'd rather go for it all in one shot. We got until, we have until March to get the, uh, drawings completed and get them to EPA and get approved before I have to nominate it, and I think it'll be a good candidate for fifty percent principal forgiveness. So, I wanna move forward with, um, modifying Burdison-Nichols contract to include these other three sections. 'Cause I am getting calls daily, we, all, all the time, with the people up there, we want water, we want water, and we've had interest surveys. These, these three sections, we had good results on the interest surveys, and people are in debt, we need a water, and I, I'd rather not drag this thing out over two years. I'd rather, let's just take this thing out, uh, hopefully get a big financial, uh, package next year. But what I'm going to require from you, Martha, is a note. I need a note to cover the modification of Burdison-Nichols contract. They're apparently putting together a proposal for me on that, but I would think that we're gonna need somewhere in the neighborhood of about a half million dollar note. And I'll, I'll get more to that.
Right.
When, when's the next round of notes come out?
Uh, I don't, it's on the smart, but we can, let's, let's sit down and talk to Christie and, and evaluate that. I have a, Martha Yoder, Chomo County Auditor, I have a question for you on the map. You're not doing Playland, are you?
No, Playland has their own system.
Yeah, I know they have their own system, but they're not super happy about their system.
They have an emergency connection to, uh. Well, they, they have an interconnection with us.
Okay.
And if they ever do want to, uh, abandon it, their own private system down there, they're more than welcome to open the valve to us. Problem is, if the people living in Playland, I think they pay twenty-five dollars a month on a flat fee for their water.
Well, and when they pay it.
We open up that, that valve, they're gonna be on our rates.
When they pay it, that's part of the problem there.
Okay.
Um, they have three separate nonprofits that handle each different thing. A lot of people move in there, don't even realize they're part of that.
They're, they're sort of like a condo association, yeah, yeah.
It's a mess, it's such a mess, and they've done better, but, you know, as trustee from years ago, you know, they wanted us to do their roads, they wanted us, we would get clunked, and we couldn't, I mean, there was just no way.
Okay.
But, but I do know, you know, I heard, trustee heard a lot of complaints, of course, that was a few years ago, and I, I know they've worked at it, but it's, you may, you may find yourself with a little knock on the door.
Okay, all right, uh, well, Commissioners, I have your concurrence there with the blueprint.
My only, yes, on the blueprint. My only concern is that Meadow Brook project, and that you said that, that two hundred and fifty thousand could be used towards that, and then if we did that, we could go to a public hearing, correct?
Yes.
I mean, shouldn't we be, we, we went at the meetings out there, we, we've heard the people, as far as, um, more township goes, on how desperately they want this project to go in.
Yes.
Is there any way we could put the other project on the back burner? I mean, Meadow Brook is on the back burner for, I've been there, that's my only concern.
I'm ready to go with Meadow Brook, but like I said, Commissioner, I haven't known where you connected houses yet. I started working on the fact sheet for the, for that public hearing, I was, I was, started working on that in June, I got to the section where, uh, connections, financial assistance for your connection, and that's where I got stumped. We don't have anything for it without the CDBG.
Well, Gary, you brought up a big question.
And the county Y doesn't have enough funds in it.
Okay.
Well, you brought up a big question, Julie Green.
Yes.
Um, using RLF, so that can be, uh, proposed immediately. We have an RLF committee at the Planning Commission.
Sure.
Commissioners are on it, um, there are funds in that.
If we can do that, then we can move on Meadow Brook now, and I don't have to worry about.
How much do we have in there, Julie?
We have some committed to other CDBG projects, but I have to check on the balance. I don't know that we wanna allocate the entire two hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, there's some, we got this residual, I, I'm not gonna need all a hundred and thirty-eight to take Stillwagon to the public hearing, there'll be some in there. If, if the, uh, Commissioners, if you're giving me, uh, I don't know, free hand here with these residual funds, I guess that, that's where.
Well, yes, you mean for the, for the Contract K and the others?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I wanna know, I'm not asking for any more ARP funds, I'm just asking for the ones that I did have that didn't get used, if I can, if I can reallocate.
I agree with Martha.
Are you all, all okay with that?
Right, I agree with Martha, though, we do need those.
We have to satisfy with Tanya and, and Martha over that.
Tanya, not Martha, Martha just needs to.
Oh, okay, all right.
(laughing). Don't give me more power than I have.
All right, and, and, uh, I would think that there's still other projects out there, too. I got Smith Stewart Road where those prices went up, I got State Line Road that went up. These are residual funds, we may need these to help, these may be in the same situ- those projects may be in the same situation as this.
Well, just, just be aware of those, too, we do have a, a healthy list of maybes that we need to get to with the ARP back through that.
I know, I know, and, and.
We were kinda counting on you budget benching to bring some funds back so we can meet the needs of some of those other diversity projects also.
All right, and that's why I'm having this discussion now.
But we also understand.
So, if you take what you need out of it, but then keep asking us, 'cause if there is something we put in hold, and we can fulfill a few more ARP projects, you know, our intention is to make sure that we take care of all the ones there first.
Oh, Commissioner, I, I can, I, I would be more than happy that if we did have the extra time to be able to help one of those other communities out with something like that, but at the moment, I don't think we can spare this with what's on the line here.
In the meantime, Julie, we look at the RLF fund and see what, what we can spare for those connections.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's ultimately up to the committee, which is comprised of you and the, it's the Commissioner's money.
Right.
So, you ultimately make that decision, um, so you, you're free to spend all of it if you'd like.
Well, I just wanna see Meadow Brook come to fruition, that's all.
Right.
Yeah, I know, I.
It's no long time coming.
My one question on an RLF, I know I sent that question to you yesterday.
Yes.
When I'm looking, how am I gonna get, how are we gonna pay for that?
Right.
Is there any job creation required to use those RLF funds for something like this?
No, we, we request a waiver for using revolving loan funds on CDBG eligible activities, and, and the state actually encourages the Planning Commission to do that on behalf of the Commissioners.
Okay.
Because they do not like to see a, a balance sitting at the county.
Okay. All right, okay, well, that's great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it qualifies because it's one hundred percent LMIs, direct benefit activity, so, you know, to use CDBG, it has to be fifty-one percent or more.
All right. All right, well, what we can do is let me put together the, the information for the Stillwagon public hearing, see how much of this, out of this one thirty-eight, well, I need to get those assessments down to sixty. Whatever is residual, then we add that to what our expected cost is on the Meadow Brook LMIs. And we have a hundred thirteen connections out there total, how many of them are actually gonna qualify?
Yeah, that's, that's a good point.
Okay.
We don't know yet, we haven't sent those out.
Well, we have got to get Meadow Brook moving, uh, that four million dollars, (laugh) that's looming out there, I, we lose that, that's.
Not to mention that whole community as well.
Yes, yes.
Gary, my, my question for you on this dollar figure, does that account for everything up through the today's change orders? Everything that we've done today?
Yeah, today's change orders was just the time exception.
Correct, but I'm just saying up through, up through current.
Uh, yeah, they're, they're all in there, yeah. Uh, yeah, so, all right, thank you, Commissioner.
All right, Mr. Danzo's not back yet, I, I need Mr. Danzo here for you, uh, Mr. Valeski, 'cause he's the one that's to hold up with the whole parking thing right now. We need his expertise.
I will say, in just, uh, informal discussions with, uh, City Warren and Marvin Group, that both have parking, uh, in the deck, um, the range is anywhere from twenty-five to thirty, I'm waiting on specific figures in, in writing, but anywhere from twenty-five dollars to thirty dollars a lot.
Right.
So, Mr. Valeski is not off on, you know, of course, comparative analysis of what parking is in and around the downtown area, the valve roof, where they're charging.
Um, my name is Jim Valeski, and my, myself and my wife, we own two sixty-five and two seventy-one North Park.
I know you're loud, but, but the people on TV, if it's legal, we gotta do it.
You have to identify.
Sorry.
I thought I was talking loud.
That's okay, and then your name again.
My name is Jim, uh, James Valeski, uh, my wife and I, her name is Jan, we own, uh, the two sixty-five and two seventy-one North Park, which also includes a, a one quarter acre piece of, uh, two parcels that, um, that run along Monroe Street, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Harmon, Harmon Street, sorry. I always get them confused. Um, so, I was approached by the county, uh, last October, if these parcels would be available to use as, as a par- as parking, okay? Uh, these two parcels are a, they're contiguous to the county's property, actually, they bisect the county's property between, uh, this building and this parking lot behind, so, uh, and so, being a good neighbor, I'm willing to work with the county to help out on a parking problem that you all have. Uh, it pains me when I see people, especially elderly people, walking down the street, uh, quite slowly to make it to the front of the building, uh, albeit that the, the, the side entrance is no longer open, so their travels are much longer than they used to be. Uh, and I see, and, and I'm just, I'm, I'm gonna be venting here a little bit, when I notice that the county cruisers are parked along the street, uh, forcing these people, which are your customers, your taxpayers, to walk even farther. That's just me venting. Uh, this property that we have would be ideal, does it solve your entire problem? Probably not, but it does offer, I have it configured right now at approximately twenty-eight spaces. Uh, you could configure it any way you want to, because the way I would like this to happen is be a, a capital lease, whereas you would take care of it as it's your own, uh, configure it as, as you would like to suit your needs, whether if you wanted to put a, uh, if you wanted to make it for cruiser parking, fine, if you wanna make it for a, um, uh, handicap parking, that's fine, or, or a combination of all there above. That's up for you, up to you decide. All I would like to do is, I'm offering, we're offering the property, those two parcels were an acre for the, uh, for the county, and, and we, when I did, we did the calculations, and I'm not gonna mention the amount in a public forum, but that's, I was, um, we were requested to make a proposal to the county under these certain tunes, we, we jumped through all the hoops to do that, uh, and now, it's on, it's, it's actually in your report right now. But this process started last October. Um, quite frankly, my wife's gonna tell me, I told you so, we should've just went in the parking lot business. But I just wanted to be a good neighbor, we, we all want to offer to you. We could do that, I mean, if you, you folks don't want, if you're not interested in the property, just let me know, so we can move on. And at the point where, you either gotta tell me if you're gonna go forward with this, or you're not, and I'll respect you either way. But right now, I'm at about fifteen thousand dollars lost revenue, and right now, today. Um, and I don't, you know what, we need to move on. Tell me what you wanna do. In the, in the proposal we made you, uh, was, was well thought out, we did the, we, we looked at parking lots around here, uh, and looked at what the, uh, Park Hotel does, uh, we look at Mark, what Mark Marvin does, uh, and all these, and quite frankly, he's, right, the parking deck is, that's a different animal, that's subsidized by the city, but if you look at the, uh, like, Marvin's parking lot over here on, uh, on, uh, on Market Street, they're four bucks a day, or four, and, and if you leave, you pay another four dollars to get back in. We're, in my calculations, we're offering to, offering this property, if, if we figure it by the parking spot, and that's a little bit less than three dollars a day. And if my, my understanding is right, this parking lot would be used for people coming and going, right? In terms that you might understand, is the restaurant, hey, how much do you value the tables at? And how much turnover do you want every, every day, okay? There's a lot of people that come and go from this building, uh, to make, to make that parking access available to them, to be able to do that. It's a lot more, it's worth a lot more than three bucks a day, per, per parking spot, I'm sorry. Uh, do it's right for the, their taxpayers, let's, you know, let's, let's cut to the chase and get this thing done. Not for, just so that you're, keep the people from walking.
Mr. Valeski, is there a possibility, 'cause this came up to me, you, you talked about the twenty-eight parking spots there in the square.
Mm-hmm.
There's still a lot more before you get to the next road where your business is?
Yes.
The middle chunk there, is there any possibility of adding a few more spots along there where we can have, for like sheriff's deputy parking only in that middle section, and then they can have another gate or whatever that comes on the backside for the sheriff's deputies?
Here's what the problem is there, is that, to market the, the building, we're putting a lot of money into it. Here's what the problem is there, is that to market the- the building, we're putting a lot of money into it. And a lot of details that most people don't see, let's say, uh, we just went down an avenue to get the, the building has an elevator. To go through the process to get the elevator certified, um, you know how much elevators cost, 'cause I think you're putting in two or three years. Um, but we're doing the right things, uh, in rehabbing the building, and we wanted to make it a- a nice showplace for downtown. Quite frankly, I mean, it could've been a drug rehab center, right? And- and that was the interest in the building before my wife and I purchased the building. Not saying that there's not a need for that, I just don't think it needs to be downtown, in- in especially in a historic district. Um, conversation is good, but we need to do something soon. Uh, but the proposal I- we made was for the quarter acre piece of property, uh, right, that's right behind your, uh, maintenance building. Now, if you want further conversation on additional property we own, we could probably have it. But right now, I'm concerned with the- the quarter acre, the two parcels that, um, add up to a quarter acre.
And again, Mr. Danzo, last I heard, we had it in his court to look at the liability, the Corso stuff. Alexandra, do you have anything to add on?
They have not responded back. We've asked for a review, and they have not gone back to us. There's still pending legal review, so. I can't answer you any quicker than they'll be able to give us-
That's on Corso's legal review, not ours.
Right.
Are we wait- what are we waiting on from Mr. Danzo? Anything more at this point?
And we did email, not only last week, but weeks before that as well. So we were consistently, Courtney's been sending an email every single week, and we have not heard back. So that's just for the actual, um, insurance coverage.
I'm sorry?
Uh, for the actual insurance coverage.
Yes.
Because in your, um, request for price, or request for quote, you indicated that you would want the county to cover the insurance.
Oh, absolutely.
So I wanna be honest with you, Mr. Valeski, right?
Yes.
Uh, Valeski, that is one of the holdups, I believe, from an insurance perspective. We have to make sure that our- our insurance carrier will take that liability on. Otherwise, there's nothing, unless the commissioners decide they wanna do something else. But we, it takes them a little bit of time to look over everything, come look at it, make sure it's-
Time drawn and out.
I- I understand. I-
It's a, you're looking at it as a capital lease, you're dealing with it as your own property. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna spend insurance money on people that are- are customers. They're, you know, these are taxpayers that are your customers, not ours. So we're not generating revenue-
But we do have to pay more for insurance. I- I need you to-
I get that.
Yeah, so we- we would be taking on that cost.
They cover our back lot, Alexandra? The back where we're parking out?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And Harmon is on their own? That City Warren covers that, or that's public?
Harmon's, not ours, that's public. So that would be the City of Warren, uh, if anything. But yeah, that's public, uh, nothing to do with us whatsoever.
Okay.
So, um, I mean, obviously, this is, again, just an insurance conversation, but everything that we, you know, take on is a higher premium, is a higher amount of, and I understand what you're saying, Mr. Valeski. I just, I have to say from a union resources perspective, oh, there's a lot of liability when you get into parking lots. People fall, uh, there's flipping issues, there's, so we are looking to take on some liability here, and I need our- our insurance provider to be okay with that, before I can give you-
Can you follow up with a phone call, then? We've done two emails, can you follow up with phone calls?
I can. But, I mean, I- I can't make them work faster than what they can work.
Right, but just tell them we're under time crunch, and that's why we're calling.
I- I-
'Cause we haven't got replies back from that.
Ergo, that's why we specified it in the- in the request.
And Bill, maintenance-wise, Bill Hart, we can, we can maintain it as far as we're gonna do the plowing and, uh, salting and stuff would be our responsibility?
Yes, that would, I think that was in the agreement. I'm sorry, Bill Hart, Tremble County Maintenance.
I think all of that was in the agreement.
Well, we- we tried to make it, uh, appealing to, the property is contiguous, uh, and bisects the, you know, to your other, your other parking lot. I mean, if you wanted to take down the poles and make it one big long parking lot,
Good.
you could do that, right? So, that's why I'm, I'm leaving it very open-ended. You could do whatever you wanna do with the property. I- I don't wanna put, um, you know, parameters on it that you are not acceptable. I'm just, I'm leaving it open. Here, just lease the property, do whatever you wanna do with it. If you wanna put thirty spots certified, if you wanna put two spots, I- it doesn't matter.
And I agree, too. This has been going on long enough. We need to make a decision. We made the decision. We've already had discussion. We need parking. We've already had the discussion. Let's do an RFP for it. We've got that. Um, and then it just comes down to us making decisions. I mean, I- I would assume we'll clear somehow, whether the rates are higher, whatever it is with Corso. But we- we knew that going into this, if we're gonna add parking, we're gonna have to be responsible, you know? So, I do think we need to make a decision on this thing and- and not prolong it any further. And I- I guess maybe what we can do is, let's set a hard deadline of next Tuesday to talk to the insurance company, and then be prepared next Tuesday to make a formal offer of- of what we, um, you know, what the total package is, whether it's a year, three-year, five-year, whatever, whatever total package thing it is, and make an offer to him. You know, at that time, be ready for next Tuesday to- to do that. And if he should accept, you know, by Wednesday, we can do it. If not, then the following Wednesday, come up with an official agreement to do that. And then internally, we can figure out how we're gonna use that. We'll have a subcommittee on, you know, with the sheriff potentially, where we're gonna park the cars, how we're gonna reconfigure accessibility with the newfound spots that we have. But I think we need to, I- I- I don't, I don't see any reason why we wait any longer than what we are. It's like you said, simple yes or no answer. We want it, or we don't.
I- I, I'm sorry, though, I do. I- I can't advise you as a board commissioner to go forward with anything unless I'm sure that we have-
I understand, but I can't see any insurance company taking way more time than what they've already taken.
Well, they- they serve a seventy-eight counties, Danny, I mean, it's-
I understand.
You know, I'm just thinking-
As long as we get the okay there, I'm ready to proceed. I mean, obviously, it makes perfect sense. It's contiguous.
I agree with you, Matt, that you don't-
Um, but, but, you know, we're waiting on the- the, to button it up and make sure-
And there are, there are-
from any liability.
Right.
Like you said, there are other alternatives, parking garage and stuff like that, but I'm, if I don't want someone to walk from the back lot, I definitely don't want them to walk from parking garage across the square. So, that's not an option. I mean, there are comps as far as pricing maybe, but for what we need them, for where we need to get them, for the reason we need the more parking here, or that we're even entertaining this, is convenience and accessibility to the taxpayer, to the customer that's utilizing our building for work or for services, uh, that we provide. And to be able to provide reasonable, close parking is- is the reason we got in this whole thing in the first place. Was, this wasn't something we just jumped up, hey, let's look for more parking. We had complaints. We had people that- that had issues. We even had, we had, how, what did we have? Two falls this year in parking lots, people trying to get to and from kindergarteners?
That's where I'm coming from. Alan Stevens Jones, which I am not saying by any means, actually, I'm the biggest advocate for this space and this parking. However, we have to work within our restrictions, and I need to know, that's my job, that's what you hired me to do, is there's a risk or there's a liability associated with it. I have to make sure that it's cleared before we do that.
Right.
Then the last step that I just wanna end this with is, I think it is the best-case scenario. Again, I also think that we should've bought it back in October, but hey, that's here and there. So with that being said-
I'm sorry, I missed that part.
I think that we should've bought the whole place back in October. Sorry, Mr. Valeski, but-
Well, that, yeah. That ship very sailed last October.
Yeah, well, when we talked about it, when we were talking about it at one point, so.
August.
August, thank you, sorry, excuse me. Um, but with that being said, you hired me to do a job. I have to be honest with you. And I can tell you right now, Bill Danzo and that prosecutor's office will not approve any contract that comes by their desk unless they have Corso coverage. That's all I'm gonna say. So I will do everything in my power to get an answer on Tuesday, but if I don't have an answer, it's out of my control. I can't force Corso, who insures seventy-eight counties in this county, to give us an answer this week.
Understand, but we can call. We can make phone calls and not emails and-
That's what I'm trying to find.
I can follow up with a call also and talk to whoever, give me the number, who it is, and put pressure on them, too, that we're under time crunch. What can I do for us? Uh, give us a timeframe at least.
Understood.
'Cause waiting is just not acceptable at this point anymore, just waiting for a return email or call back without any expectation of heads up, it's gonna take a month, it's gonna take two months, we're reviewing it. Our review process takes this long. And we should be able to get an answer like that at least from somebody. I would hope.
A final note, my- my wife and I, kind of been good neighbors, we've done everything you've asked us to do, right? To your point, I appreciate you protecting the county's interests.
Yes, but it's your job.
It's your job, right? And I, you know, and I'm not gonna poo-poo on that. That's, you're doing what you're supposed to do, and, but, it, we've been working on this for quite a while. It's time that comes to fruition. It's time that we get a definitive answer, uh, and we just need to move on and be great neighbors. You know, that's, that's what we're here. We wanna be good neighbors, and we're, wanna be part of the downtown redevelopment process. You know, and this goes back many, many years. I don't know if a lot of you, any of you know this. When I came to the, uh, downtown redevelopment, uh, you know, my wife and I actually penned the original legislation and sponsored the legislation with the City of Warren for the downtown entertainment district.
And we do have to be cautious of that, too. We have, with the AMP just this past weekend and the weekend before, our parking lot's full on Saturday of people that are attending the AMP. And if we, they can't park in his place on private property technically, but if that is part of our property, we're still, like you said, adding to the downtown development issue and parking issue for all downtown, um, it all sucks.
You know, and-
Also why we're insured.
Of course.
So if something happens, you know?
If we were, if we were in the private parking lot business, absolutely, we would've been open to accommodate, uh, people, uh, going to the AMP. The church, it's a win-win situation for them. They charge five dollars a, you know, for every car that goes in it. I'm sure they're housing about a hundred cars or so. You do the math, it's pretty easy. You know, we want less than three dollars per spot, if you, if you're looking at twenty-eight. So, I appreciate your time, and thanks for everybody listening to me vent a little bit.
Well, we will reach out and see if we can answer as soon as we can, or at least get a timeframe, um, as to not prolong this any further.
By next Tuesday would be great.
We're gonna try. Okay, anybody have anything else before we get to ARPA?
For sure. Bill Hart, Tremble County Maintenance. Um, I had email issues when I was off last Thursday, Friday, so I'm just reminding or asking permission again to move forward with the four-H building, Warren, at the fairgrounds. I missed, uh, Mr. Jason Toth's opinion on architect's language. I wasn't able to see it while I was off, so I seen it today. I just forwarded, uh, the, uh, architect engineer to redo it, to send it back, so hopefully we'll get it done and on for next agenda, so we can start the four-H Warren building for the fairgrounds.
Definitely agreeing with that, Mr. Hart.
And I, and I did not reach out to, I haven't a chance to read the fairgrounds about the commercial building yet, so, um, I will make a point to get that today.
Okay, while you're, while you're up, Bill, um, jail roof leak we remain aware of today, what's happening with that today?
I got a, we actually have to stink the drain, so we can get somebody on the roof and re, we're hanging to get down in there and to make it happen.
And we have someone doing that today?
I called somebody, and they're on route, I don't know what time today they're coming.
Okay, so that's outside of our services, we're hiring someone else to do it and get it done?
Yep.
And then secondly, finally, the cafeteria downstairs, when are we getting the artwork up, the chargers?
The pictures are hanging. Tables are on hold. I reached out to the gentleman two, three weeks ago. He called me back. He's looking into getting those tables for us donated, so. And as far as the other artwork, that's not on me.
Right, but the other stuff and, uh-
The pictures are hanging.
The chairs and charging ports, do we have those yet?
I did not get the charging porch yet. I'm still trying to find them.
Can we get this wrapped up, 'cause I've got, I've seen Mr. Preavell multiple times this weekend. He asked about it, Mr. Gasser.
I'm trying to find a strip, one that I cannot find. Everything comes in a bulk. It sits in the middle, so. I'm trying to find something that would be like plug in the end, you have a station thing, but I, I'm looking.
Okay.
I'm still looking.
Yeah, let's try to get this button up if we can, 'cause that's-
I just don't like my font. I don't want, want it-
Another one that's been going on for a year and a half to try to get it done.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Martha, do you need us for this?
No, there's nothing on here. Thank you.
All right.
Any signatures? Here's where we go, or no?
Uh, all I needed was Commissioner Cannon's. I already got him before the meeting, so I'm good.
He'll taste you if you need to.
Okay, thank you, John.
Hi, John, nice seeing you.
Martha Yoder, Tremble County Auditor. Before I get into the ARPA, I just have a little thing. I probably will announce it tomorrow as well, but Ohio's sales tax holiday starts today and goes through August eighth, um-
It seems extended, huh?
Yes, they've extended it. It's also amplified quite a bit, because before it was more geared towards, um, sco- back to school. Now, it's all tangible property under five hundred dollars is tax-free. And that includes going out to a restaurant and eating in, you know, you get charged tax on that.
Really?
Yes, you get to have a tax-free-
Oh, no, I knew we got taxed on that, but they're, that's, wow.
Yes, yeah. And I have it actually on our Facebook page. I have the link, the Auditor's Facebook page. I do have the link with the FAQs from the state. So, um, that is a good thing to promote. Yeah, we like to get our sales taxes here in the county, but it also promotes business, and that's a good thing, so. Um, I just wanted to let you guys know that. Um, my notes for you for this week, as far as eligibility, um, Gerard Community Senior, uh, Community Committee Senior Services Westbound eligible. Um, we got the resolution and agreement, but I wanted to get permission from both of you to make sure that I can put it on the agenda next week?
Yes.
All right. I have the list of those that are still pending. It's still pretty large, so I don't suggest, I don't wanna add any more to it.
Trustee, uh, Deidre called me Saturday, um, there's no further movement on the Culver Lake. He said he's been back and forth, uh, trying to get answers, and they've got some other grant opportunities they're exploring also. But as far as, uh, anything else from Tonya, he didn't have anything else to present to her or get her, so I don't know.
Well-
How that stands with her.
She asked for things, and they're not always responding to.
I told him to please check with her to, uh, to see, because this has been pending for a long time.
Um, Gus Davis has, uh, a total of forty-five, a little, almost forty-six thousand dollars in, uh, frozen money. They do have a fifty hu- seven hundred dollar request for cemetery surveying that was on the maybe list that they would like to substitute for a portion of that. Um, where in line would you like me to move that? We have, um, at this point, uh, if we, we have, um, everything that is after, or after what we have right now. We have a total of six requests that have not gone to Attorney Rogers. All of those are dated after the cemetery request. So would you like me to put, that was on the maybe list, the- the date that we received the cemetery request?
Okay.
Um, would you like me to put it ahead of those? Would you like me to put it after those?
I'd say make it number eight.
All right.
If- if the other ones are going next in the next batch?
It would be seven. It would be seven. I think, I mean, I misspoke. There's six, so put it after that. All right.
Okay, Commissioner?
Yes.
All right, um, all right.
Did you find anything more out on the USS Oklahoma one?
I, I have not had a chance to-
The building's vacant now?
To look at and to talk to her about that.
Okay.
I actually need to- to do a call with her. Uh, I just haven't had a chance to, um, and actually, part of it is on the next one. Um, I had a, um, conversation with, uh, Gary Schaefer from the engineer's office on the three potential road projects that we have that have frozen money, uh, Bazetta Farmington and Mespo. Um, one issue that came up is the idea of doing inter-agency agreements like we're going to do for sanitary, um, in order to obligate the funds, um, according to the rule. So if you're in agreement with that, I would like to go ahead and speak with Attorney Rogers about that and give her the go-ahead, um, to, um, to go ahead and do that, and also to, uh, to do that, and also to begin drafting, uh, the agreement and other documents for Bazetta. So there's two things, and I apologize, it was a little bit confusing there. So, um, so long as they're agreement, you guys are in agreement, I'll be talking to Attorney Rogers about this, the specific, the idea of doing it in an agency agreement. Also, to get moving on the agreement for the other do- and the other documents for Bazetta.
Yes.
Those two separate things.
I'd say yes and yes, and I know Bazetta's waiting on this, so they can allocate the rest of the funds.
Right, you have the updated yes sheet and the bottom line spreadsheet there. That's it.
Is there anything else? Not, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there anything else, Commissioner?
Um, I guess before we, before we adjourn, just with Lisa, Dine Fest, you guys are-
Oh, yeah.
Uh, we need to discuss that with Martha and that. Last year, Martha got the booth, and then we assisted Martha. This year, do we wanna rotate it? We get the booth, and Martha assists us, or what, how would you like to handle it this year?
I'm okay either way. I'll do it.
If you wanna take turns, or-
I'll do it. It's, I mean, neither-
Okay, Martha will allocate the booths, and then we will provide staffing and assist with Martha and fill in the slots uh, as we already approved with, uh- And then we will provide staffing and assist with Martha and filling in spots, uh, as we already approved with, uh, uh, in the past, past practice, what we did last year.
Hopefully, they knew that the more centralized.
Yes, and Martha, please ask that, because it was kinda down in the end. Ask if you could be more along the midway where essentially the Democrat and Republican booths are somewhere in the center where it's kind of county government-wise or whatever, officials-wise.
Right. It's a little late, so we'll see what they can do for us, but I'll give them a call before I turn everything.
I know Cory, uh, is coming to town tomorrow.
Okay.
He's the one that's, that handles a lot of the decisions there. He's out of town, but he will be back tomorrow, um, so if we don't get him today, drive him tomorrow.
All right.
And then anything else, uh, other community events coming up that we should know about that Cory may want to have a presence or?
I think there's something else out at the Fairgrounds in the fall, right?
Yes, there's Halloween.
Yeah, the fall, yeah, they have Halloween, that's what I wanna bring up. They have a big Halloween event in the fall in September, and I would like for us to be a part of that, if we could, with a presence and, um, and see if, uh, it's a one-day thing, and they're.
Two. I think it's a weekend.
It's a weekend.
I, I do.
Do they have the grandstands open for that, or?
I, it's brand new.
It's brand new, so.
It's brand new, um, let me see.
And I know when they have like trick-or-treat at, at, uh, Eastwood Field, they get thousands of kids. So I, I don't know what to expect with this. They've been promoting it pretty good, but it is a fair board event. It's not like an outside company or anything, so. It's kinda in-family.
Yeah.
So that's why I think we should have a presence there of some sort and, and do our part or whatever to, uh, distribute candy and, and have a presence there of something of good. Maybe that's a good place, uh, for recycling. They have the raccoon costume to get involved with our, uh, recycling program, um, for the kids. And maybe reach out to some of the other departments if they have things that are, uh, Sheriff's Department, I'm sure will have some type of a, a dare or, or program or whatever for the kids. Make sure if they don't, that we reach out to that and provide as many services as we can that are public awareness for children.
Commissioner, it's, um, September twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second. I'm gonna go ahead and send you the picture that I have of it. That's all I have is.
And maybe not all three days. Maybe we just pick one day of it or whatever, or we can have a presence or, or rotate it through with different departments if there is interest there. We have some time to work on it, but. Uh, also, there are some other events coming up that I think we just need to collect the data of what it is. I know Hartford has their Sunfire Festival and the Apple Festival, and then we also have the, uh, Lordstown has their cider festival. That, um, those are community events. We should at least announce, uh, when we get the dates of those, or any other ones that come in that are community-oriented that, that I'd like to make, keep that a habit of announcing them from the days on Wednesdays for the public to see, of how they get involved in community events we have throughout the county. And that's everything I think I have at this point.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Ms. Canel Mesa?
Yes.
Yes.